Are we able to see?
You're up.
Are we able to see who's on, on that little screen? No worries.
The issue is what these screens is what they say.
Oh, I got you. Okay. So it's one o'clock. We have several on. We'll go ahead and. Hi, everyone. Okay, so it is March, no, yes, March 3rd, 1:00. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And I would ask if there is someone who knows to approve the last minutes of February's meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the February.
In a second.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so moving to agenda item number two, if we have any public input, comments, or discussion, no action may be taken on a matter raised under this item of the agenda until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which actually will be taken. Please limit commentary to three minutes per person. Is there anybody who wishes to speak?
Oh, do it again.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just felt well after you guys missing lunch, so I came down.
Thank you. All right, hearing no comments, so we will go ahead and move forward to item number three, COVID-19 update. So I'll start with this and then we'll move on to other folks. So as of this morning, I received notification of one more positive case. That brings us to a total of 940 for the county. I received information about one additional death in our county. That brings us up to 20 total. However, our most recent case that was positive was from February 18th. Some of the, there's some time lag sometimes when we get results back from other places if they're tested somewhere else or in the hospital somewhere else. Sometimes it takes a while for them to give us that information. So but I think that's really encouraging. February 18th, that's a long time in between a positive test. So I think it really shows that we are having a decline.
Which is good.
Which is excellent. I think that probably the last little rush we had in the community has run its course, let's hope. And we'll hope that it continues to be this way. Does anybody have any questions about those particular numbers? Before I move on.
I'm just wondering how are they doing now with the president of the?
Better.
Keeping it under control.
It seems like it's run its course there too. Let's hope it continues that way as well. So disease investigation and contact tracing, same. No changes. Our state partners really help just continue to report the cases to me and then we split them up in the clinic for contact tracing or notifications and reporting back to them. So in regards to testing, testing, very exciting news. We got more rapid ID now tests. So we are running them now in clinic more regularly and I will have Cindy, our hospital CEO, speak to this if she'd like to elaborate, but the hospital board approved contract for ordering more of the ID nows and our contract should be actually moving forward with the company. The last batch that we got, we actually bought from Battle Mountain because they finally, after many months, received theirs. Yeah. So kudos to Cindy for using that resource. We bought 1,008 kit, test kits from them and have been using them. And the contract from the company is, I think, moving forward, but I'll have her speak to that if she's able to, which will be, I think it's 800 tests a month and that's a year contract and it's a lot of money. So the hospital needed to approve that. So that's really, really exciting news. The other testing we have available is the BiNext Now, which is the antigen test, but we're not using that much except for some, some staff testing, but not as much since we have the ID now. Because again, the antigen tests are not considered confirmed tests. They don't count if they're positive in our numbers and they don't count if they're negative. So the BiNext Now, we're kind of holding since we have the others now. They also, we still do have the state lab to use. They can do the the testing to check for variance and they're the kind of definitive test if we're looking to rule in or out COVID. So I think that's, it's been kind of a breath of fresh air and a relief for those of us who are trying to test people in a timely manner and get things moving along. So on that note, for testing for the rapid ID now, it's usually accurate if you're testing day three of symptoms. If you're testing before that, there's a certain percentage that may be false negative and up to day five, by day five, they say you should pretty much know for sure if it's not positive on day five of symptoms, it's probably not COVID, but you would have to run the state lab test if there's some real questions about that. And so just take, you know, that into consideration when we're ordering these tests. We still have to sort out the whole timing of it and, and go from there. Let's see, okay, from testing, we'll move on to vaccinations, which I think are going really well, especially in comparison to many other counties in the state. We're moving down our tiers pretty well. I know not as quickly as most of us would like, but you know, I think that Sean and Marcia and Cheryl, you guys are doing an amazing job getting things organized and getting this done. I know we did receive our newest vaccine, the Johnson &amp; Johnson, this week. It got approved last weekend. It was already in the state and it was shipped out. So we have received our allotment for this week. And we also received, I believe, the Moderna. But I will open this to Sean and Marcia or Cheryl. If you guys could provide any updates regarding vaccinations and the plan for our hopeful pod coming up. Whoever would like to speak to that?
Good afternoon, doctor. It's Sean.
Aye.
So, so our next event is this weekend, the 6th and 7th at the Community Center. That is the dose two of the Safeway Pod. So we will get 280 some people done that forgot their first doses done in February. And then between, the next major event after that is March 27th. One day, Pod to, to do dose one and the second day is scheduled for April 24th, also at the Community Center. We're anticipating setting that up as a drive-through event. Still coordinating some logistics in terms of staffing and that kind of thing. But we expect to be able to, and we'll have enough vaccine as well to do up to 500 people and anticipate that we'll be able to open it to the next category down. So the, whatever is below the frontline community support, that would include the, let's see here. Whatever that next category is, we should be able to expand that to reach out more to the community. That'll just frontline supply chain and logistics. So we'll, we're working on that. In the interim between this weekend and March 27th, Marcia and Cheryl will be continuing to give vaccines weekly in their clinic on every Wednesday. Between 50 and 60 slots available on those dates. Looking further down the road, depending on how well received the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is, that could greatly simplify our, our problem. You know, we could basically double our throughput if we only have to give one dose. So kind of be interested in seeing how well received that is. And there's, you know, there's definitely a trade-off with that new product. Efficacy versus efficiency. So kind of waiting to see who, who is interested in having the Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Wonderful. Marcia, are you there? Do you have any comments? Or Cheryl?
I think Marcia said she had to go to a doctor's appointment in Reno today and I'm not, I, I talked to, or I traded texts with Cheryl this morning, but I'm not sure if he's online or not.
Thanks, Sean.
There is a meeting with the 101 that just. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so we have been doing in-clinic vaccinations. Last week, we did 60 patients and it went really well. Next week, on the 10th, I have scheduled 45 and in there, we put 15 patients that were interested in the Johnson &amp; Johnson because we did receive that. And with that, it's kind of tricky because with the Moderna, we have to do it in quantities of 10. And then with the Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's in quantities of five. So I do have 15 total on the first dose, Johnson &amp; Johnson. We'll see how that goes. And then on the 17th, I have another full clinic and I also was able to put 10 people in there from most of the community, a couple of core, most of the core is doing theirs on the 10th. And they're going to do the first dose of the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So yeah, we're staying pretty busy. It's moving along. It gets tricky with the first and second dose. So, but it's going good and I think my phone calls are getting less. So I think that's a good sign that we're reaching a lot more of the public.
Excellent. Thank you so much. In regards to vaccinations, we were able to also do some in the clinic, trying to finish up some of the over 60 fibers that we missed in these other places. And so we did 20 first doses and then we'll have those 20 folks returning for their second dose later this month. And it's, it's logistically difficult to get that done. So we're gonna have to wait and see if we're gonna be able to continue to do that or not, but it was great to be able to offer those in clinic and we'll see how things shake out down the road as we get more vaccine available and we get down to smaller numbers needing it. Let's see, okay, Sean, anything else that you wanted to bring up regarding vaccinations or mitigation or PPE?
Just as we, as we look towards the future, and again, some of that will be dependent on, on which type of vaccine we have access to, but we'll either need to plan for some additional pods in the future. You know, maybe one a month or something like that. Cause I think when we get to the, when we get to the group of, you know, 16 to 64, you know, that's obviously probably the bulk of the population. And so, you know, it's going to take us a long time to get through them unless we have some pretty significant events to, to kind of get big groups of people done. So just, you know, kind of looking forward to, to that planning cycle. You know, but, but it's a little unclear at this point, you know, I think vaccine is becoming more available. We got 200 doses of Moderna this week and 100 of the Johnson &amp; Johnson. So that's, that's three times our usual allotment. Hopefully that trend continues and then it will be, you know, then, then vaccine shortage will not be our, our limiting factor. Then it'll be our ability to administer it. And so, so how we approach that, I think will be something we'll have to think out. And that's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you.
Is the Johnson &amp; Johnson one you can keep for a longer period of time?
It's, it's stored similarly. It's once, once it's open, I haven't looked at that, Cheryl or Sean. I'm not sure what you know about as far as once it's open, how long you can keep it for, like the others are six hours.
Three, three months, three months for storage in the fridge. I don't know about once the, but once the vial's open, I think it's, you know, it's, it's numbered in hours. It's short.
Yep. So that's another reason why it makes it logistically difficult to kind of get these things planned. So we will keep looking into that. And as things are moving forward, they're, you know, figuring out little things that maybe are, we can ease up a little bit on this or that. So they, they changed the freezer requirements for the Pfizer a little bit, but I'm not sure of the specifics. But so, you know, as time continues, things will, will evolve, I'm sure.
That's the one that had to be super cold.
Now it can be less super duper frozen for a short period of time.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Anything else from anybody who wants to speak to the COVID updates? Let's move forward then to item number four, updates regarding recent isolation quarantine. Tyson and your wife very graciously came up with this plan for neighborhood grocery delivery service for those folks who are isolated at home or quarantined and don't have family or friends who can do their shopping for them. We spoke a little bit about this last time. And Anna came up with a little flyer and some cut out handouts. So Tyson, if you have a minute to go over that?
Yes. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, we've got so far 17 volunteers from the community who are willing to help out in case there's a lot of people who, who need this. So far, there really hasn't been very many takers, but it's very reassuring that there are many people in this community who are willing to step up and, and help out for those who are in need. But yeah, we continue to post it on different places on Facebook and letting different organizations know as well as posting it in. Let's see, the Just Serve app as well as the post office and just Reddit word of mouth, letting people know.
Wonderful. Thank you. Anybody have questions about that? There is a flyer available here and you can get them to anybody if you want to have them hung up somewhere. Thank you guys for your work. You did a great job on that. Okay, let's move forward to item number five, updates regarding school or business concerns or needs. So Tyson, I'm just gonna have you speak just briefly about what you've been witnessing in the community and anybody else who would like to add comments about that in regards to how we're all responding and, you know, handling this fun pandemic that we continue to try to navigate through. And then I'll have school partners discuss the new testing for athletes. So Tyson, just briefly, if you have anything to say?
Yeah, nothing major. I'm still impressed with people who continue to wear their masks and how out in the community. Sometimes it seems like, you know, it's wearing on all of us. We're excited to get rid of the mask. So I see a little bit less mask wearing in the community, but people tend to have good, good humor and people are getting along well. And I do appreciate that a lot. That's all I have to report.
And school updates?
Sure.
Honestly, thank you for inviting me and operating your group. I'm happy to try and answer questions if there are any one of those.
You could introduce yourself.
Yeah, Superintendent Russell Pax.
Awesome. Thank you.
Specifically, you mentioned about our school testing program for athletes. Whether you're fully aware or not, the governor's directive 038 is issued two weeks ago today. We got people to surprise and to relaxation by old contact or close contact sports. They're in I double A's. So we went from not planning on being able to compete in a football season that's already been moved to trying to add to it fast forward and come up with testing plan, which we didn't fully have any idea what those stipulations would be until N I double A released, released those plans last week. And inside those plans came for testing of student athletes, the coaches, those things in that sport weekly. And that sent us on really a hunt for resources at that point. And we reached out to local hospital, talked about what their capacities are, which we all know that capacities within healthcare and those things are stretched extremely thin. What the capabilities were, Principal Reynolds, myself, listened to the, the points that all of us are shy on manpower and those resources. Had an offer come from the Fallon-Puyrie Tribal Health Clinic, extended an offer and thought that they may be able to take some of this burden or most of the burden off on their shoulders. And up until yesterday morning, that was kind of the direction all of us thought we were going. But in the background was Plan B, just in case things fell through. And that was relying on our local healthcare providers. And yesterday morning, due to some things out of our control or anybody here locally, there became some issues with, within the tribal health clinic and their superiors about could they extend testing services off a sovereign ground at some localities and concerns obviously around. So we're to Plan B, which was our Plan A, but in respect of everybody's time and energy, we're back to working with our local partners to try and, and give our kids an opportunity to go out and compete. Our first testing event for them will be tomorrow afternoon. Details are still, as we speak, I'm sure being ironed out about who and how all this will work. But we'll be at the school. We have large space. We'll have a couple of people come to ensure BiNext Now rapid test. That is the preferred testing that's been identified within the testing program. And there's a number of reasons for that. And I'm not a medical professional, but there was a number of reasons for that. But the number one thing was the fact that the resource exists and it exists in quantities that we could get our hands on with authorization through state vendors that have these. The frustrating piece for, for us as a school, quite honestly, goes to the fact that these are the same tests that we were trying to get our hands on since October that had very strict guidelines attached to them, such as as you administer BiNext Now, you would have to administer a PCR test at the same time. So if I went and got my waivers at the school district, I could get okay to give the BiNext test, but I'd have to have people that were willing to do these other things. These are the same testing that was open for EMS, fire, healthcare providers, all those things. But the stipulations that were there, and you know, I try not to jump into the political realm all that often as a school and school district. But the reality is, is when that was given and that okay was given, my personal opinion on that was these tests, they had close to 200,000 tests sitting there that were going unused in our state with expiration dates that ranged from March 15th to March 30th. And so it seems pretty ironic to me that the same things that we were battling in October and again in first of December are now more actually able to flow through so that we can put the sport of football back in. So that's kind of my political side of frustration a little bit that's there. Because I know that anybody that's walked in this, the efforts to go about to keep our kids in school, these were tests that would have went a long way for us to be able to keep those things going in other realms other than the football season. And those frustrations have taken and pulled on a lot of us. And so that's what we were dealt and we've managed to get this in place. It would take place over the next six weeks that the main component is a student athlete that's involved in football has to be tested weekly. If, if they have a positive, there's steps that take place within that. Of what that means for the rest of the team and then potentially into the school, which opens up other issues and concerns that take place should we have those issues. But it's an opportunity for those kids to just, I've been hitting the knee a whole bunch. Why, why football? Why wasn't it for basketball or wrestling? And I just told you, it was, it was no fault of our own. Same technology and the same tests were there. Our school district, I know, trying to think in an email correspondence part of this meeting, asked about where the school district was and our ability to do the testing ourselves because there is an option in there. I had pursued a CLEA waiver as well as state laboratory certification, exempt state laboratory certification for the purpose of BiNext Now testing in October. We got down the road a ways. We got to the PCR test components. We weren't willing to go there. We backed out of our application. In December, we started through that process again. I have one school health nurse. We get all the way through to the final piece of thinking we're going to be through an inspection. And because of some of the requirements within the storage and some of the things we had to sign off around PCR testing again, we end up not, not finishing that process out. Did not feel like we'd be successful. We have again, in January, we filed our CLEA waiver and our state laboratory piece. I am sitting, waiting for our inspection, if you speak. The requirements to get to our formal inspection, which requires actual BiNext Now tests that we've ordered for two weeks from the state stockpile that comes out of USA Parkway. Once they're here, we can actually go through the inspection component and hopefully check the boxes to where we will either be able to take on the testing ourselves or at least be able to assist. So long-term, I heard long-term thinking about vaccinations and those types of things. Well, it's the same idea around testing for us quite a lot. I think it was if I can get our district to be certified to be able to give these types of tests in the long run, looking towards next year, it will give us a tool, a tool bag to be able to help keep us in person as well as hopefully all the extra things that will come. So it's a long-term vision and hope, but in the meantime, we have to have support for our local people to make it. So that's kind of that.
Wonderful. Thank you for the update. I wasn't sure where we were with the CLEA waiver, I exempt status. So are you going for the PCR as well as it just for the BiNext?
Just the BiNext.
All right. Yeah, the, the PCR is a whole other component. So I think that we can support you with that, especially now that we're gonna have this new contract.
But. Then we refer if somebody, they get referred to somebody.
So I would like to some, have a conversation after this, some, at some point about processes. If you have a positive BiNext because that is an antigen that needs to be confirmed as quickly as we can before we start kind of freaking out. Because I have had a couple recently that were positive BiNext, negative ID now. You know, we just don't want to go down that road if we don't have to. So we'll put something in place to make that happen. All right. Anybody have questions about, about this next adventure for COVID testing?
If it's something else related to COVID in school, I find taking that question, I get to these things very often.
We appreciate you. We appreciate you. Anybody?
You've heard me say and written a paper that we're only as healthy in their schools or communities. And our attendance rates and things would show that would confirm your data from the middle of February to now. We're a lot healthier right now than we've been since we were here. For what it's worth, we're experiencing the same.
Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other business concerns or needs that they'd like to bring up in relation to COVID?
Nobody. Justin?
All right. So let's move forward to item number six. Recent updates regarding processing inquiries on the Board of Health. So that form that's online is still working. I have not had as many email questions. Most of them were in response to immunizations for COVID and it was really nice to be able to have that out and just to quickly send back our response to somebody. So that's working. Thank you, Justin. Yahoo. Nice. I know, right? Nothing's easy with COVID, but that one was wonderful. All right. So I don't think there's anything else on that. Move forward to item number seven. Regarding the Board of Health Information Semination. Sean was very helpful getting out flyers last month when we did the the first fake way COVID immunization pod. Has anybody seen flyers up and around? Have people asking, do we have any other needs that you think we need to provide? As far as advertising these things, any other ideas?
I think because of that discussion last month that with the flyers up and 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 me being able to tell a lot of people to call Cheryl that that really helped because when my seniors start talking and they get it out there.
Okay, wonderful. All right.
Doctor, this is Sean. For the for the drive through pod, I think we're going to need to do a different round of of flyers, update our our website information, obviously. And I'm asking the sheriff to use his road signs again like we have in the past for for the COVID testing and for the flu pod.
Sounds great. Can you kind of come up with a draft for that? Like which tiers slash lanes we're going to be targeting for that pod for the innovations and we can just do a quick brief review of that and then send it out to everywhere. Is that okay?
Well, yeah, well do.
Thank you. Wonderful. Probably need to have that out in the next week or so. So we have a couple of weeks of advertising. Yes, that makes sense?
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
Hey, Dr. Van Gilder, it's Marty.
Hi, Marty.
So just on our side of it, like at the business office, I know a lot of people call us because we have the switchboard. And we really don't have any information on the pod. So if we can get like information or a flyer, just so we have it so we can answer them correctly. Because sometimes I feel like they get passed back and forth and they really shouldn't. So just if we can guide them in the right direction as to like when the next pod is or whichever.
Are you part of the department that had meetings for the hospital? Like the guys have someone there for that?
I'm not. I think maybe is. But if you can, I just wanted to put that out there, like so Sean, maybe Sean can get us flyers or if you could just shoot us an email.
Betcha. Get it done.
Thank you.
Yeah, anywhere we can try to provide information for people to help get the word out is great. And any suggestions are welcome. We'll appreciate that.
Hey, hey, Marty. Sean. Just so you know, what we've been trying to do is really channelize everything to the county website. So you know, the state has a website. And basically, you know, and there's a hotline and there's all these other different venues. And in order to kind of simplify things, what we've been telling everyone is go to the county website. When you get to the main page, there's a pretty prominent, you know, little little advertisement thing you can click on there and then all that information. So if folks don't have the particulars and we'll certainly get you flyers and all that other stuff and and you know, emails. I think there's a lot of the details come out in emails as well, but but fundamentally, it's always safe to just tell people to just go to the county website and you'll find all the details you need there.
Thank you, Sean.
This is Cheryl. Have we decided how we're going to do the paperwork? Are we going to do it online? Where people go online, register for like a time slot plus paperwork for that pod?
You know, Cheryl, I saw Marcia's email about how they were doing it in Humboldt County for a multi day pod where that where that kind of appointment making thing kind of made sense. But but for a one day pod that's going to happen in like, what is it, six hours total or less? I'm not, I'm not sure of the utility of that. And I guess what I'm really not sure of is is how we administer that. So people, so who who's going to run that data gatherer? And who's who's going to run that, you know, appointment making thing? I don't understand how that will help us.
Right. Okay. So but when the time comes, we can put the forms online like we've done with the flu pod.
Yeah, absolutely. And I and I think then the backup for that is as people queue up in the line. You know, because those forms aren't onerous. They could, they ought to be able to fill those out in pretty short order if they don't have the copies already done in advance. But I'm sure Justin would 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 gladly host any forms we can, we can.
Okay, so do we have? We're definitely going to do it on the twenty seventh, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we're going to, are we opening it up to the next tier of sixteen and above with underlying conditions? Or are we still going to keep it at the sixty five?
Well, I think I don't know about sixteen to sixty four. I think what we could say is is we could do the underlying, yeah, underlying conditions and disabilities. And then looking over in the in the left hand prioritization lane, the frontline supply chain and logistics. So I think we can broaden out to those two categories for for the pod.
Okay, all right. Because I know I'm going to get inundated with calls and people are calling now and I'm just letting them know that we are going to do a pod on the twenty seventh. I just don't know the particulars yet. So as soon as you guys figure that out, you know, then at least between the website and when they call me, we have, you know, some information to give them.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, we can nail that down right now if the doctor, you know, wants to. I don't know, Doctor, are you comfortable with expanding to those two groups?
Absolutely. I think that just staying in line with the frontline ag mining, et cetera, whatever on that line and anybody with underlying health conditions, I would really like to move that forward as soon as we can. We have a lot of folks interested in that. So if we have the vaccine availability, I'd love to do that.
Okay. And what do we consider underlying?
There's actually some state guidance on that. There's like eleven different things that can qualify you for underlying conditions. And it's it's pretty broad. So things like if you have asthma, you qualify. So and I and I think we need, my my recommendation is, is that we take a very liberal approach to that, you know, I like I, you know, I don't think we're going to want people to bring us doctor notes or anything like that. If someone come in and says, hey, I have an underlying condition of this, then I think we got to kind of take that at face value. Otherwise, we're really going to get into you know, discussions that I don't think we want to have.
Correct. And Sean, I don't have that list. So if you could email me over any information you have on that, that would be appreciated.
Yes, perfect. You know, usually top of the list are diabetes, lung disease, heart disease, chronic kidney disease. Those are kind of the top ones. Any underlying liver disease, those kinds of things, those folks are typically at at the highest risk. But we'll definitely get that off to Cheryl. And as soon as we can nail down the specific language on the advertisement flyer, then we'll get that off to everybody.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments for item seven? Move forward with the item number eight announcements, future meeting agenda items. Okay, so number one announcement is just one thing to bring up that we have our incident command trailer. It is the county's trailer parked behind the clinic in the back, right where the tent is, where we're doing the COVID exams and screenings. It's between the tent and the clinic. It is have been opened and wiped down. We're getting supplies in to be able to do testing and exams in there for when there's inclement weather. And or when people don't have a vehicle. So right now, while it's nice weather, we're still having folks drive through the tent. We just go out with our cart and our garden and do the quick exam screening and testing there. But we do have some people who are walk ups and it's nice to be able to have somewhere enclosed where they can sit down. So that has been wonderful. It is beautiful. If anyone wants a tour, we can probably arrange that at some point. So logistics are still, you know, kind of in process as far as how much we're going to use it right now. I don't know, but it's available and we're very excited. So thank you. And what else? So future meeting dates, we've got the next few months scheduled already. So the first Wednesday of every month through June is when our meetings will be. And those agendas and minutes can be found on the county website. Anytime you want to look for them under Board of Health. And agenda items, if there's anybody who'd like to add agenda items to the next meeting, please let me know.
I think we pretty well have them covered if we keep them like that.
Just generic standard. We'll keep it along. If anyone has anything specific, you can add it at future dates. Okay, so we'll go ahead and move forward to item number nine, public comment.
Doctor, this is Cheryl. For our next meeting, is that March thirty first or April seventh?
April seventh, first Wednesday of each month.
Okay, all right. Because we, on that Wednesday, we have our clinic for the second dose. So Marcia and I won't be able to be on that one.
July seventh?
Yeah.
All right, we will make sure that we talk beforehand and we can get information out.
Okay, great.
Great. All right. Public comment, Kathy. Microphone.
Right now, the the library is partially open. We let people into the lobby to find, to look through the new books. We have a part. And we will let them into the rest of the building to use the computers. And then the computers are really like the chairs in the area. And we would like to wait until, let's say it's March twenty second, and we will all, the people who work at the library will all have had their second shot. And, you know, we understand that it takes two weeks for it to take full be fully enforced or whatever. And we are getting pressure to, you know, open before that, to actually let people into the whole building. And we would like to wait until then before, you know, our own health and and then when we open, we want to do it kind of more slowly, keep doors locked, but when people come, you know, we'll let them in. And then, you know, we can kind of explain to them the rules. They can, they have access to the building. And then you know, check that looks at to them. And, you know, right now, anybody who calls or knocks on the door, you know, if they want any library materials, we'll get it for them, check them out on their car and then pass them out to the room. We do let, like I said, people come in to the foyer area to look at the new books. So I'm wondering, you know, does that sound reasonable to you? Should be? Should we, you know, just like throw open the doors and let everybody in? You know, do you have thoughts on that?
So how many folks would typically on a busy day be utilizing our library?
You know, it's hard to say. Sometimes, and we never know what's going to happen from day to day. But sometimes we fill up with kids and, you know, and other times, usually right after school, we'll have normally we have four computers, but we've spaced them out. So we only have to do that, you know, social distancing. But, you know, those are all busy and and people are finding books and families come in. You know, they've got their the kids and I mean, it can be really busy sometimes. And then, you know, well, we won't have anybody in for an hour, you know, so I can't give you an exact count, you know, just it varies. You know, depending on the time of the day and day of the week.
So do you have a plan as far as how many folks you would like to have at max in the library? I guess we talked about that, like, I mean, we would rather not have any more than this number of people in the library.
Well, we have, but you know, we have kind of a disparity and I think we should have more than what staff, but you know, it's hard to say because we have so many aisles, you know, and people cannot pass in, you know, in the book, in the raiders. You can't stay six feet apart if you're passing, right? You have to back up and let them through. You know, they would have to stay at the ends. It's kind of hard to say. I don't, I'm not sure what the building's capacity is.
Well, I think I don't see that there's a problem waiting until that date necessarily. Let's maybe make a plan to meet. And have a tour of the library and kind of come up with a plan. Does that sound reasonable as far as the numbers of people?
Yes, that would be fantastic. No.
Did you say you didn't know what the capacity was?
Right.
Okay, so if you call Rodney at the party department, I'm welcome. What I did at the senior center is I had Rodney and Mike Heidel. They came over, did all the measurements and came up with the number.
Okay.
So maybe make that contact.
Right, right. I checked with Jean Moke. She was the director before me. And she said that, you know, it had never been done.
That's what they base it on, this group.
And then the number of obstacles, I think, I think they're both taken.
So they'll take it into consideration sometime.
Sure. And I'll give them a call. All right. So will you contact me?
I will.
Okay. Sure. Thank you so much.
Any other public comments, discussion? To item ten, move adjourned. That's wonderful. Thank you very much for being here.